This is a call to order, the July 5th, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Duck Town Council. At this time, I'd like to ask Councilmember Sandy Whitman if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our eye, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our goal.
Please join me in a moment of silence. This time, we're going to go into item number two, Public Comments. If you'd like to address the council this evening, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address, and your comments will be learned in two, three minutes.
Hi, I'm Reed Carter. I live at 153 St. Frau, I actually live in the area. I guess I'll be here, I guess I get two, three minutes to speak. So I want to alert this group to a problem that's brewing in the town. And I know about this problem because I've gotten four or five calls from it, from neighbors and people that live out of state, out of North Carolina about. And that's concerning the trash can rollback, the trash can ordinance and the new procedures for issuing violations and potentially issuing a fine. And the reason I'm, some of the people that have contacted me have said, this is an unworkable plan. And, and the reason they've said it's an unworkable plan is because of part of the rule is a five, you have to put your cans out by 5:00 PM on the night, the day before the pickup. But all the people who rent and have cleaning services come through end up having, the cleaning service has to put the cans out when they finish cleaning. And that's not at 5:00 PM, the day before the pickup, which would be Sunday night usually because those transitions are Friday, Saturday, Sunday. It means that all of those people are bringing their cans out on the street right now when they finish the cleanup. Now, other people like myself who don't rent, we take, we leave duck never on the weekends because traffic is a little scary. And we, when we leave, we need to put our trash out so we don't leave a full can under the house. One of the people that called me had gotten a violation and he must have, he was directly across the street, he must have gotten, called his real estate company and told them, don't violate the rules. Well, they left the trash cans in the driveway and, and the new renters came in and they're full of trash cans. And you've just rented a place for $10,000, you're not going to feel like, I've got to empty the, the last guy's trash. And that, so the trash is overflowing, all the cans on the other side of the street. Anyway, it's a series of problems, I'm sure you're aware of these problems, but people are upset about them and I'm reporting that to you, but I've got, I only have two minutes, so I'm going to give you a solution. I'm an old advertising, marketing guy and, in a prior life, and I had, I think you could turn this whole trash can thing to your advantage if you change the way you enforce the policy. And I'm not criticizing how Jim is going around and taking pictures and sending out notification letters, and I've seen the letter, but my suggestion is you turn it into a PR opportunity. You create, you know, a campaign for the town that's friendly and positive, like a clean up the town, clean up our streets campaign. You send, when you send out the, instead of sending out a violation letter saying, if you do this three more times, we're going to charge you every $50 every time you leave a can out there, you're going to have a problem with, people could be really upset about it.
Reed, I'm sorry, your three minutes is up.
Usually there was a clock here, so, okay.
She was tied yet back there.
All right, but I'll find, I'll finish up, but that, but they, I think you can turn it into a real positive thing. You could drop the 5:00 PM rule because it's totally unworkable on the weekends. Last weekend, I went around and over 50% of our houses had trash out on the streets in violation of the rules. Now, they're not going to get a ticket because I think.
Reed, your time, your time is up. Thank you.
Good luck.
Anybody else like to address the council this evening?
I'm Bob Letzel at 141 Betsy Court. I've spent a fair measure of my time yesterday and again today volunteering for the town during the parade and this morning in the park, in the parking lot during, during the magic show. And on a, on a positive note, what I wanted to report to the council was particularly during the parade yesterday, I spent a good bit of my time in my golf cart on Christopher and on Scarborough, just the joy and happiness and the positive comments from all of the spectators and the attendees at the parade. And not nearly a negative comment at all. They were exceedingly complimentary about the parade, exceedingly complimentary of the town of Duck, its administration, and for what they do for people who come here. So I just wanted to share that with you today. This morning, in working at the, in the parking lot, there was a lady who was exiting and she stopped, she had a carload full of children, they had just finished the magic show. And she asked, she stopped, she said, have you ever gotten an opportunity to see the magic show? And I said, yes, I have. And she said, it was just fantastic. I've been coming to Duck for several decades. And she says, it's the first time I've been able to come. She said, please tell whoever is in charge in Duck that that is a wonderful thing and that the administration of the town of Duck is right on target and just creating a wonderful environment for all of our visitors that we had. So I wanted to pass that along to you and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else like to address the council? Would that entertain a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented this evening.
Any further discussion of the motion on the floor? If there are any non-favoritism, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Consent agenda passes five to chair. Thank you. Moving on to special presentations, the introduction of 23, 2023 lifeguards, Eric DeBrowski. Welcome, Eric.
So I prepared a video introduction for many reasons. One, the weather's been really bad and it kind of forced our hand on competition too, so we're hosting a competition again tonight. And we'll see how that works out with the weather that's looming over us. It's been kind of a busy week, but hopefully it's a short video and you'll actually see more lifeguards and get more information than just, my name is, you know, Clay and I'm from wherever. But, but, you know, they're all really excited about it. It should just play, right? Which one? The big one?
My name is Eric DeBrowski, I'm the chief lifeguard for Surf Rescue. We protect the beaches in Duck, Southern Shores and Cape Patterson National Sea Shore. You're about to meet some of the guards, you probably spent 120 hours in training and worked pretty much five to six days a week throughout the summer. It's somewhat grueling at times and at the times it's very rewarding. So let's go meet them.
Hi, I'm Carolyn, I'm a seventh year lifeguard at Surf Rescue captain here at Surf Rescue and I'm from Southern Shores.
My name is Adrian Morelata, I'm a third year guard and from Point Harbor, North Carolina and I go to ECSU. Go Vikings.
My name's Ellie Gardell, I'm a sixth year lieutenant lifeguard with Surf Rescue overseeing HR and I'm from Southern Shores.
Hi, my name is Marshall, I'm a sixth year lieutenant lifeguard with Surf Rescue. I'm from Roanoke, Virginia and I graduated from University of Virginia.
Hey, I'm Joseph King, I'm from Bethesda, Maryland, my seventh year working for Surf Rescue as a lieutenant, I attend the University of South Carolina.
Hey, my name is Kat DeBrowski, I'm my sixth year lieutenant lifeguard for Surf Rescue. I'm from Puygway, Virginia, North Carolina and I graduated from Piper University.
Hi, my name's Wade Hampton, captain with Duck Surf Rescue from Richmond, Virginia. It's my 23rd season on the Outer Banks as a lifeguard.
My name's Ty Willow, I'm a first year guard from Roanoke, Virginia and I attend Virginia Tech.
Hey, my name is Tucker Croft, I'm a fourth year supervisor here at Surf Rescue, grew up here on the beach at Outer Banks and I currently attend College of Charleston.
My name is Will Garbit, I'm a second year guard, I'm from Richmond, Virginia and I go to Virginia Military Institute.
Hi, I'm Emerson Mann, I'm from Kitty York, North Carolina, I'm a rookie guard here at Surf Rescue and I go to First Flight High School.
Hey, I'm Blake Given, I'm a second year guard, I'm from Richmond, Virginia and I go to Virginia Tech.
I'm Logan Indian, I'm from Charleston, Virginia, I'm a first year guard and I go to San Antonio High School.
I'm Liza Neely, I'm from Richmond, Virginia, I'm a third year guard and I go to University of Virginia.
I'm Eva Beck, I'm from Richmond, Virginia, I'm a third year guard and I graduated from University of South Carolina.
I'm Oscar O'Kan, I'm a first year guard for the Bronx New York and I'm going to SUNY Villeneuve.
I'm Emma Foster, I'm a first year guard, I'm from Fairfax, Virginia and I attend Virginia Tech.
I'm Mary Buckley, I'm a first year guard, I'm from Dunsborough, Maryland and I'll be at Salisbury University.
I'm James Zudek, I'm from Southern Shore, North Carolina and I attend North Carolina Central Science and that, I'm a second year guard.
Hi, I'm Harley Reddell, I'm a second year guard, I'm from First Flight High School and I'm from Southern Shore, North Carolina.
Hi, I'm Mary Congrash, it's my second year with Surf Rescue, I'm from Blacksburg, Virginia, I'm from West Virginia.
Hi, I'm Hillary Neely, I'm from Richmond, Virginia, this is my third year summer here and I went to University of South Carolina.
Hi, I'm Harley Holcomb, I'm a first year guard, I'm from Winchester, Virginia and I go to James Madison University.
My name is Lucera Hanech, I'm a first year guard, I'm from Iowa City, Iowa and I go to the University of Iowa.
Hey, my name is Kenson Ferguson, I'm a first year guard from Richmond, Virginia and I'll be attending the University of Virginia.
I'm Ada Piftin, this is my first year with Duck Surf Rescue, I grew up on the Outer Banks, I go to Camille.
My name is Carissa Matroski, I'm from Greensboro, North Carolina, I'm a first year guard and I go to College of Charleston.
Hi, I'm Nolan Walsh, I'm a second year guard here for Duck Surf Rescue, I'm from Curry, North Carolina and I'm going to have a lot of faith in you.
My name is Dalton, I'm a third year supervisor at Duck Surf Rescue, I'm from the Outer Banks and I'm going to NC State in Fall.
My name's Alex Sheckels, I'm a first year guard, I'm from the Outer Banks and I go to University of North Carolina.
Surf Rescue 2023.
I think you get a better view of everybody this way and it was kind of fun for them to make, so I appreciate it. Anybody have any questions while I'm here?
Did you do the video?
Did what?
Did you make the video?
Did I make the video? No. Benny made the video and Benny was doing this like 15 minutes ago before we even got in here, he was putting the final touches on it. He goes, I didn't know it was tonight, so, thank you.
I just want to thank you for the guards that helped try to get the water out of Scarborough.
Oh, yeah.
Lane yesterday.
You know, they're all really good kids and they aim to please and they're all, I just people pleasers, I guess. They just want to do, they want to help out any, any way they can, so appreciate that. Thanks.
How many guards do you have, Mark?
Staff's about 50. It's, I have some part-time staff that really don't show up until the end of the summer. I kind of don't count them, but to, to get everything done that we do, you know, the 20 guard, 20 positions that we fill in Duck, and then there's seven positions that we fill in Southern Shores, and then the Park Service has 10 positions, all of those together, we need about 50 people to, to do that. In a perfect world, it would be 42, but people would go on vacation, things happen.
It looked like a fine group there, really, and, and a lot of them from quite a bit, quite a distance, which was nice.
Yeah.
Nice to see. Where do we, where do they stay?
So I've got two houses in Kill Double Hills right now, we're a little cramped. I bought some property across the bridge and I'm going to build a couple more so that we can, we'll have a little bit, we won't be so cramped.
Good, good.
So they're, they're four to a room.
I know.
It'll, it'll, it'll be a little bit better.
They're from, they're in college, they're used to that.
It's a lot. It's way too much.
Yeah.
Anyway, thank you.
Good luck in the competition. Thank you, thank you, Mark. Item number four B, introduction swearing in a police officer Blake Cottrell. I'd ask Chief Jeffrey Ackerman and soon to be officer for Blake Cottrell to go to the podium. And our town clerk, Corey.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, special guests in the public. Tonight, the town clerk will be swearing in our newest police officer, and I'll be promoting three familiar faces to new roles in the department. In the interest of time, we're going to swear in Blake and then we'll do the three promotions as one, so go ahead and introduce Blake Cottrell to you. Officer Cottrell comes to Duck from Terrell County Sheriff's Office, he comes with six years of experience. Prior to working there, Blake served eight years as a state correctional officer and three years as an EMT. Blake has a passion for helping people. He puts us back at full staff, so excited about that. And Blake is joined this evening by his girlfriend Elizabeth, who will hold the Bible as the clerks wears him in, and then she will poke him with the badge.
We're all ready.
Oh, yeah.
After I say this, the oath, say I will or I swear, I Blake Cottrell do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, that I will endeavor to support, maintain and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, that I will be alert and vigilant to enforce the criminal laws of this state, that I will not be influenced in any manner on account of personal bias or prejudice, and that I will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of my office as police officer with the Duck Police Department according to the best of my skills, abilities and judgment, so help me God. And I just need your signature. Right there, and then she can pin you. You don't have to date her. It's so fun. Thank you.
I'd like to ask Justin John Missy to please come forward and bring your family members with you. All right, I'll say a little bit about each of these fine individuals and then we'll do the swearing in.
Right here, you stand next to me in case anything happens.
Master Officer Justin Knockan came to the Duck Police Department in 2018. He's risen through the career development program and now has 15 and a half years' experience as law enforcement officer. Justin is phenomenal police officer, always goes the extra mile to help folks out and to close difficult cases. Just today, Justin donned a pair of waders, jumped in the sound without hesitation and rescued a fawn. So more to come on that at next month's meeting with pictures and hopefully video. Justin is joined tonight by his lovely wife Megan and their little princess Abby. And little known fact, Justin just published his first children's book, which stars Abby and Megan and Justin. It's available on Amazon. Let me know if you need the link. I got my copy. Master Police Officer John Gilreath is no stranger to anyone who lives here who has visited Duck. John joined our department in 2017. He has a presence about him, makes you think that he's all business, but truth be told, he's a gentle giant and everyone knows that. All joking aside, John comes, brings 17 and a half years of experience to work every day. He brings so much to the town, to the department, to his fellow officers. He's a mentor, a leader, excellent trainer. He recently revamped the department's field training program from the bottom up and the fruits of his labor are now on full display as Blake goes through that program. So it's been nice to see. John is joined this evening by his wife Laura, Harper Riley and Asia, lovely children. When the council.
This is Hampton.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Can't read my own writing. I hear these names every day, I still get them wrong. When council approved the creation of two corporal positions to allow for greater supervision and accountability in the department, it was no difficult task to choose the department's next leaders to fill these permission, fill these positions, rather. It's my great honor to promote Justin Knockan and John Gilreath to the rank of corporal this evening. Now on to my rock over here, Lieutenant Clark, another familiar face to all. Missy came to Duck as a sergeant in 2010. Their positive impact has been felt here ever since. In 2021, I promoted Missy to lieutenant shortly after I assumed the role of chief. Since that time, Missy has remained at my side. She works tirelessly to ensure that Duck Police Department meets its mission and provides the highest level of service to our community. Missy is my most trusted advisor and believe me, she isn't afraid to tell me when I'm wrong about something, but that's really what I love about her. Missy's a strong advocate for the officers and she stands as a positive role model, not only to her son Colton, but her fellow officers that she works with and her community all throughout Deer County for all she does outside of work. It is my great honor again to welcome Missy to her new role as my deputy chief of police. She is joined this evening by her son Colton and her loving parents. And the other thing I just want to say with all the families here, one of my favorite things about this job is hearing, being in a small police department and hearing about families and what's going on with people's children and wives and their lives. And I can tell you, family members, I know you make a sacrifice too, but you have some really strong advocates in your corner and they say really nice things about you when they're at work every day. All right, I will step out of the way, we're going to swear you three in together. We've got three Bibles here.
No, she's got one.
Oh, she's already got one, okay.
I need you all over this way. Okay. Raise your right hand and after I give the oath, say I will or I swear. I'm Melissa A. Clark, I Justin L. Knockan, and I Jonathan B. Gilreath do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, that I will endeavor to support, maintain and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, that I will be alert and vigilant to enforce the criminal laws of this state, that I will not be influenced in any manner on account of personal bias or prejudice, and that I will be, excuse me, I will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of my office as deputy chief of police, police corporal and police corporal with the Duck Police Department according to the best of my skills, abilities and judgment, so help me God.
Do you need some water?
No, I need your signatures.
Chief, could you go back to the podium just a minute? I had asked this question to town manager before, can you explain the insignias that these people wore, so identification to the.
Yes, sir. Just finished working that out. I didn't bring copies with them with me tonight, but I will provide them to you. But yes, each will have Chevron's insignia that they wear on their sleeves to designate their rank and, and they're designed to match the colors in the uniform and the patch, so, yeah, be glad to provide that so everyone can see that.
Thank you. Very good. Going on to item number five of quasi judicial public hearing. A public hearing discussion consideration of SUP 23-006, a special use permit application by Rosemary Gordon for four allowances related to fill and grading activities associated with construction of three soundside retaining walls of 103 Amy Lane. This time, I'd like to turn over to town attorney, Robert Hopps.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we will open the quasi judicial hearing on this application. When considering an application for a special use permit, the town council sits as a quasi judicial body. Quasi judicial hearing is the process for the council to adjudicate how the general law applies to a particular situation based on an evidentiary record presented during this hearing. Your two key responsibilities are first, to determine contested facts, and second, to apply the legal standards to the facts. You may apply only the standards contained in the ordinance. You are not permitted to change or modify those standards during this hearing or as part of your decision in this case. In conducting the hearing, certain safeguards must be instituted in order to give the applicant a fair hearing. The applicant has the right to cross-examine witnesses and offer rebuttal evidence. The procedure of the ordinance must be followed. The council members may question any witness at any time during the hearing. Questions from the floor will not be permitted except by cross-examination from council members, the applicant or a party once recognized to speak. A member must not vote on the application if the outcome of the matter is, is being considered as reasonably likely to have a direct and substantial financial impact on the member. If such a direct and substantial financial impact exists, the member should disclose it and ask to be excused from consideration of this matter. If any members of the, if any of the members present have had any contact with anyone prior to this hearing in which the particulars of the application were discussed, or if you've received letters, email messages, phone calls or other contact from anyone concerning this matter prior to this hearing, you must disclose those communications. You must base your decision on this application entirely on the facts presented during this hearing and disregard the particulars discussed with the applicant or another party. A member must base his or her decision on the evidence presented during this hearing and a member who is dismayed by witnesses during this hearing. While you may be presented before or during this hearing with copies of unsworn statements contained in letters, emails and the like, such unsworn evidence can only be used to corroborate or supplement other sworn evidence presented during this hearing. Unsworn evidence such as letters or emails can never be used as the sole basis for your decision. At this time, if any member needs to recuse themselves from this hearing for one of the reasons that I've explained, please request that a motion be made to recuse yourself from participating in this hearing or voting on this matter. You may do so at this time. Also, if, at this time, if any member needs to disclose a communication about.
a communication about the subject of this hearing that you've had prior with the applicant or others prior to the hearing, now's your opportunity to disclose those communications.
I attended the planning board meeting, it's the liaison between the town board and the planning board. It'll have no effect on my decision this evening.
At this time, the town clerk will swear in the applicant and all witnesses who plan to provide testimony or evidence in this case. And please keep in mind that if anyone in the audience thinks they might want to speak during this hearing, please stand at this time and be sworn. You'll stand, please, if you're gonna be sworn.
I swear that I do, I swear that I swear that this statement is the ultimate and the truth, the whole truth and not the other truths, so help me God.
I swear.
Thank you. At this time, Joe Hurd will make a presentation on behalf of the town staff.
Thank you, Mr. Hobbs, and good evening, Mayor Casey, members of council and members of the public and senate. I'm gonna put it together as more of a PowerPoint, so. I wanted to start by, you know, I think the... It covers, this is one that we're to start by looking at the property itself. So you can see there. That's a picture of the area photographed, the property. But going back to this, it is in a single-family residential district. Like all the properties around it, contains, it's a conforming lot. It contains about four tenths of an acre. Contains a three-bedroom home with a pool and patio. At the rear of the property, that'll be under discussion later. But you could see some of the key points there in the bottom bullets. And that this sits on a bluff about thirty feet above sea level. And there is an existing soundfront bulkhead that you can see on this on the left side. Just outside of the, of the county is marked on there with in red. We do have for your reference a topographic map if, if we need to refer to that. But the key there is you can see how close those colored lines are to each other just beyond the pool. So that geography drops off pretty, pretty strictly, pretty quickly once you have the improvements on the property. So this property was part of the Amy Acres subdivision that was created in 1970. There are only four lots on the west side of the subdivision. There is another area of it that fronts on Clover Drive, but there are only four lots on the soundside. So it joins within the neighborhood. You have across Amy Lane and adjoining property on the soundfront. And then you have another property that's to the east, both of which contain six-bedroom homes. The issue that the applicant is dealing with is that tall bluff over the years has been subject to erosion. And it now threatens the stability of the swimming pool as well as the pool deck. They're located at the top of that bluff and I'll show you a picture of that. So that's what it looks like from the sound looking back on it. And the applicant, in order to address that issue, is proposing a system of three tiers of retaining walls that together are twenty feet in height. And you can see it here. This site plan, if you see on the left side, also shows the existing bulkhead along the sound that will not be changed or affected by this project. So again, they're looking at three tiers. And this is a cross-section of what there's like. What I wanted to point out here are that you have two eight-foot-high retaining walls, one lower one, one middle one. The upper retaining wall closest to the pool is only four feet in height. And it doesn't require, that element of the project does not require special use permit approval, but the other two do. Cause they're eight feet in height. So the other thing that's important as we go forward is that you can see the extent of the retaining walls. This is in the case where they're proposing to stretch them across the entire property from one side to the other. You can see they're just proposing the retaining walls in the area to stabilize the pool. So they're not impacting the adjoining properties as much as something would if it was carried all the way to the edge of the property. So again, two eight-foot-high retaining walls, one four-foot-high, sixty feet across. And the existing, you have the existing bulkhead along the sound, it's not, it's already there. So they, this special use permit has three different elements that you're dealing with. To allow walls that are up to eight feet in height or six foot is the max. Allowing retaining walls to support and contain fill period. And allow up to six feet of fill behind the middle retaining wall and eight feet of fill behind the low one to help support those walls. And again, the maximum amount of fill on any lot is thirty feet. So I do reference the applicable ordinance sections, but I'm gonna jump into the special use permit criteria. So this is the, these are the findings that the council has to make in order to approve a special use permit. So one, if the site is otherwise adequate to accommodate the proposed project. We do know that they do meet the minimum building setbacks, but they don't have to cause they're treated as walls or fences. So, but, so from that aspect, there's no issue. All the existing improvements, as far as we've been able to determine, appear to comply with the sound code and they're not in the sense it's talking about expanding those things or doing more with the property, just protecting what they already have. They are required to get a camera permit, they have submitted the application for that. So that aspect we covered by the review by the Division of Coastal Management. And so the planning board found that they meet this first finding in their recommendation. Second, the applicant has demonstrated that the requirements of the ordinance are unreasonable or impractical. We've documented, we talked about some of the issues the applicant is facing with the settlement of the pool and the patio and decks. And the intent of this project to stabilize those. Our current standards, and I referenced them earlier, prevent the applicant from doing that in a reasonable manner. And so the board also found in their favor in their recommendation. Third, the amount of fill is a minimum necessary. One of the things that we liked about this proposal is related, rather than just one big vertical wall with a ton of fill behind it, it breaks this slope up into three distinct retaining walls as a setback. So it minimizes the height of the walls and it minimizes the amount of fill that's necessary. So we think the applicant has made a really good faith attempt to minimize, you know, that what they're asking for. And the board agreed with that and found that met finding three. The fill would not negatively impact adjacent properties is number four. And again, as we noted, in this case, they designed the retaining walls where they don't extend over the adjoining properties. You will receive a copy of a stormwater runoff analysis prepared by D.O. Engineering. And they talk about how this project will actually improve the stormwater drainage on site. And the one thing I was gonna point out all the way back on this slide, you'll note there are gentle basins at east level. There's a red line right there. On each level, there's some stormwater retention that's occurring under this proposal. So, and I believe that the council did receive an email from an adjoining owner also stating their, their support for this proposal. So the board did find that the improvements would not negatively impact adjoining property owners and the finding four was met. Finding five is that the special use permit is consistent with the town's comprehensive and land use plan and vision statement. You have more detail on that in the staff report, but the key things there are that those documents both support shoreline protection and stormwater management, particularly along the cortex sound. And this project, as it's proposed, does both of those things. So the board found that it was consistent with the land use plan and the vision. And the last item is that the applicant has submitted a drainage plan. And in this case, they had one prepared by a North Carolina licensed engineer as I referenced earlier with D.O. Engineering. So you have in your package a copy of that with the details that Mr. D.O. included in there. So to wrap up our presentation, at this public meeting on June 14th, the planning board determined that all six of the findings were met by the proposal, although they did make it a condition that the applicant submit that engineering plan that was underway. And it has been done. So they did find that all six were met and voted unanimously to recommend approval to the town council with the following conditions. First, the proposed retaining walls must be certified by a North Carolina engineer. That has been done, so the applicant has already complied with that condition. It has been, they were submitted to us last week after the packets were already together. But I did wanna report that to you. Second, if the applicant must obtain a camera permit. The applicant has submitted that application, so that is underway. Third, that the applicant must obtain necessary land disturbance building permits. Fourth, that all areas of land disturbance must be stabilized prior to issuing some certificate of completion. And fifth, the applicant submits a water drainage plan. As mentioned, they've already done that. So that concludes my presentation, but I'd be glad to answer any questions the council might have.
Joe, I would assume if, if they built this to code, we'd have multiple more retaining walls. Obviously, the retaining walls will be shorter, the fill will be, but you'd have more than the three retaining walls if it was built to code. In other words, shorter retaining walls, you'd have more steps going up. Be kind of a...
I can, the applicant's representative from Milsa Marine is with us tonight. I don't even know if that's feasible due to the height and the, you know, like each retaining wall has to be tied back. And there might be some serious difficulty in achieving that. I'll let him speak to that when he comes up, but it's a good question. But I think there are some serious challenges with that.
Maybe Kevin, can Kevin answer that then?
If you'd like him to come up now.
I mean, if you had shorter retaining walls, you'd definitely have much, much more...
Kevin, you need...
If you'll come up, I'm sorry, if you'll come up to the...
Yeah, you'll need to speak in the mic up here, sorry.
Well, actually, the, the design started out with where Mrs. Gordon wanted to have it, which is, you know, leaving that flat down there, which is basically the thirty-foot camera buffer. And she wanted to just stabilize the hill and that was the original draw. And that was the original drawing that we came up with. And we did a little bit of looking at what it would take to shorten those walls somewhat. And it would take two more walls, which is basically another 24 feet. So now we're going to be almost to the sound front wall. So it just starts growing and growing and growing, and it starts adding a lot of cost to, so. And then all of the fill, even if we made them four-foot walls, all of the fills, I mean, all of the walls are still, don't pass and would still require a special use permit. So we were right back to the drawing board anyway, because we'd be out there where there wasn't any slope at all, and we'd be filling the entire wall. And so that's how that evolved.
Thank you.
Joe, maybe you might remember a few years ago, we had a similar application for 1398 Duck Road that we did not approve. Can you explain what the difference is between the two of them?
I guess it depends on the interpretation of the word similar. You know, it did involve construction of a retaining wall, but the topography in that case, if you remember, is almost exactly the opposite of what we have here. We have a steep vertical, almost a vertical slope. There it was. So the two key differences there is that we had someone who was looking at building the wall out into the sound or right adjoining the sound, trying to recapture area that had been lost to erosion. And they were looking to expand their yard by 30 feet, 30 feet to the west to create a level yard that was about three to four feet in height that would go out and then straight down. In this case, the applicant is not proposing to re-service any lawn area. All they're looking to do is prevent any further erosion of this higher bluff. So if they were looking at doing what 1398 Duck Road was proposing, they wouldn't have a system of tiered retaining walls going down. They would just go straight out 30 feet and then have a 20-foot-high wall to, you know, and create 30 feet of lawn area. So that's the main difference is that the other one was looking at building up their property. This one is stepping down. They're not looking at adding any new property. Does that help explain the difference?
Well, I think the big difference being that they were trying to reclaim land that was already underwater is the big difference. Is that correct?
In the other, in the other case, yeah.
In the 1398 case?
Yeah.
I wondered that, so I'm glad you asked that question. I wondered that same thing. And the other difference, and I'm not sure if I'm right about this, is that it expanded the entire length of the property or width of the property as opposed to a portion.
Well, those were, yeah, the impacts that it would have on adjoining properties were also different than this proposal. But that's really the main thing is that they were trying to build up, they were basically trying to establish a level lawn that went out 30 feet from where the erosion on that property was, whereas in this case, they're not doing that.
Joe, could I ask if there was any vegetated requirements? I was noticing it with the interest, the idea of holding a retaining wall, and maybe this is a question for the engineer, but will there be growth on those level parts of the 10 feet wide sections of the retaining wall? Or is that?
I'll certainly let them speak to the details as far as that goes. But we do require one of the specific conditions is that it be stabilized. And that's what that means is that, you know, we have an area that's planted, so it's not loose soil.
Joe, I have a question. You've gone through, I think, five conditions, the fifth being the drainage plan. The draft order only lists four conditions. Is that because they've already submitted the drainage plan and we don't need to include that as additional?
And so the council doesn't need to recover that in their approval since it's already been accomplished.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions?
I think the.
All right. Yeah. All right. Thank you. I'm gonna call the next witness next. No, no problem. Okay, so would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation?
Thank you.
Please do so.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I don't have a formal presentation, but I would like to say the reason that I don't have to touch my property outside where the pool area is, is because there are still good trees left on both sides, in addition to one standing tree that's 40 years old at the bottom in the grassy area. So I know the importance of trees. We were tree-lined when we first bought the house. We had no erosion problems until the tornado hit and Irene hit, and then Michael was the last of the big trees that went, except for my big fig tree. So to answer or to give more statement for one of your earlier questions about building out smaller walls, I would have loved to build out smaller walls, but that would have meant my 40-year-old fig tree would have to go completely. I believe that we're going to save the fig tree. In addition to that, the north side has a lot of trees still going up the hillside, and that hillside is very stable. And it has always been my plan, once I got this cliff stabilized, that I was going to replant the native plants and trees that were there originally at the bottom. There were quite a few. It was almost like a forest. And I, to the south side, it's an empty lot, which really was heavily, heavily treed, and there are no trees left. So on your statement or concern about vegetation, I am very concerned about vegetation. I'm a big proponent of native, planting native, because that's what we need here. Really helps the ecology in so many ways. So in addition to these walls, it's my plan to put as many native things that I can in those tiered walls and at the bottom.
Oh, yes. So I'm Rosemary Gordon. I am the owner and resident at 103 Amy Lane. I'm really proud to be part of the Duck community, and I'm hoping that this will stabilize all the erosion and damage that's being caused to my house. So thank you for your support. I'm hoping it's a go.
Any questions for Ms. Gordon?
I think there's one other thing that's important to note in all of this, from planning board to the design and everything, it's all been about trying to stop what normal rainwater does, is it's dragging all that material down the hill. But what this does too is it protects her pool from another Irene level type event that would come over that six-foot wall. Because if it came over the six-foot wall now with something like as major as Irene, she would lose the pool and borderline start losing the house. So I think this is a long-term fix to both the everyday erosion from the rainwater that's just dragging everything down the hill and is slowly taking her pool deck with it, or and also protecting her from a hurricane level event. Thank you.
Hey, Kevin. Kevin?
If you can state your name for the record, just so we'll have it.
My name's Kevin Leinberger with Millstone Marine. We're the contractor.
Hey, in the design for the water runoff, you got these infiltration areas here, and the one looks like it's a stone wall coming forth, says drainage area 3,800 square feet.
It's all going to be sand and then stabilize a little bit of topsoil and seed and grass.
Not there. Let's go to the side. It looks like it's coming off the side of the house. Not that drawing.
I don't know what you're finding.
I'm waiting, right there. The upper, where it says infiltration areas, and you got the drainage area 3,800 square feet. Is that a rock runoff there?
I don't, we don't have it.
It's pavers.
We've got a wood walkway that's going to be four foot down from the pool that sets on top of that short bulkhead. We don't have any stone anywhere.
It doesn't say it on the one you're looking.
That's for existing walkway.
It's just stepping stones.
Yes, stepping stones.
I'm just reading what it says up there.
Yeah, there's stepping stones. I'm not sure what the green slotted lines are to represent, but I can tell you that over the past year, I've installed rainwater capture system.
What we did was, was we, she had a survey commissioned, and we took the output of that survey, an as-built survey of her house, and gave that to the stormwater guy to do his thing. And he just, the survey located those stepping stones on there. Was that part of our application?
See that?
Okay.
Yeah. Mine says fence there. You're in a different, there's two pavers.
I'm not exactly sure what these green slotted lines represent, but I.
Yeah, I could tell you I have successfully captured in the last three weeks 500 gallons
of rainwater. So my system is working, and I'm sure these additional walls and the swales in the middle of each wall, platter will capture anything else.
Mr. Hurd went over earlier the four conditions for approval, and those are set forth in the draft order in the agenda package. Are you in agreement with those conditions?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
In fact, I can add, I tried to start this project more than a year ago, and I had applied for a camera permit and was granted the permit last fall. Unfortunately, by the time we got through this whole process, it had expired, so we've now put in for the new camera permit.
Thank you. Other questions for these witnesses? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Is there any other evidence to be presented in this case? Any remaining questions from council? Okay, at this time, we will close the public hearing, and you may now deliberate. There is a, if you are inclined to grant the permit, there's an order in your package, a proposed order that contains proposed findings of fact, it contains your proposed conclusions, and it contains the proposed four conditions that have been proposed by the staff. And as you heard in the testimony, has been approved by the applicant. So at this time, you may deliberate.
Thank you, Ramon. Any further discussion by council?
No.
Seems, seems all in order. Good plan.
I'll entertain a motion on approval of S U P 23-006.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve S U P 23-006, a special use permit application by owner Rosemary Gordon for allowances relating to fill and grading activities associated with the construction of three soundside retaining walls at 103 Amy Lane with the findings of fact and conditions proposed herein.
Okay, fine.
Any further discussion on the motion on the floor? If you bring none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six, by the side of public hearings, we have none at this time. Item number seven, all business items deferred from previous meetings. A discussion consideration of resolution 23-009, a resolution of the town council of the town of Duck, North Carolina, revising the personnel policies of the town of Duck. True?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. So this is a continuation of the discussion we had at your last meeting. We proposed during the budget preparation and discussion process, a few changes to our personnel policies and just following up on that. So there are three that we're going to talk about this evening. One would change the wording in our personnel policy regarding vacation time accrual that would allow prior government service outside of the town of Duck to count towards someone's years of service as we calculate that for their leave time, vacation leave time. The second was to implement a retiree health insurance supplement, or a stipend for retirees that retire after July 1, 2023, and also allowing these retirees to participate in our health insurance plan. And the third was implement a tuition assistance program. When we discussed this, and I'm not going to go into reread the slides to you, the first one we'll do is the vacation accrual. Council had some discussion with me last month about this particular change, and the questions really came about, well, what do you mean by prior government service? And does it need to be continuous? So we took that, and you have in your, in your staff packet, some options related to this vacation accrual. And we'll say, just remind you that this will impact 17 of our 40 employees, and all but three of those are in public safety. So what's in the resolution that you have in front of you tonight for consideration is language that would change the years of service definition in the vacation accrual, vacation leave accrual section of our personnel policy. Presented you with two options based on the discussion we had last, last month. The first, it adds the word federal into the language that we provided last time. So no other change other than, so it would now read any unit, a unit of local governments, a town, city, or county, state, or federal governments. Basically, any prior government service would count towards someone's total years of service when we try to calculate what their accrual rate is for vacation leave. Option B here adds the word federal and also, it also tries to make it so we're recognizing someone's continuous service, but not really completely continuous. So we don't want someone that has worked for, say, the federal government for 10 years and has been out of government service for 10 years and coming here and counting all that. So it's, this says, so the prior service, which doesn't need to be contiguous with the service in Duck, must have ended no more than two years earlier than the date of initial employment with Duck. So someone that's been out of the government game for less than two years, when they come here, we'll go ahead and reset that clock for them. So that's the vacation leave accrual one, and I'll just, I'll pause there and see your reactions to that.
I think option B is stronger. It closes a loophole that's there that we don't want to, we don't want to have to deal with.
I can also agree that option B gives you some, a little more control. Just curious why you chose two years and not three, for example?
No particular reason, other than two years is, you know, someone leaves government service, goes into the private sector and says, you know what, government sector, you know, the public sector really wasn't that bad, and comes back. And typically, that's going to be a fairly short time away from the public sector.
I was kind of thinking too of maybe just family situations, taking care of someone that required somebody to leave service, just not for doing anything other than just having to stay. that required somebody to leave service, just not for doing anything other than just having to stay at home to care for somebody. So that's why I was curious if the two years is perhaps too stringent, but I don't want to make us like rewrite everything. I was just curious where you came up with it.
I think that's a valid, I think that's a valid point. I mean, I think you just have to pick some, I mean, if you want to have that, you have to pick something. But I think you're right, two years for childcare might not be might not be enough. I mean, you can pick another number. Or you could say something like, not to complicate the world, but you could say something like, as long as the years you were away from public service don't exceed the amount of time you were in public service, it'll get counted. Like they used to say that for your pensions. It's like if you leave a company and you're going from that company, if you were there for seven years and you return to that company in less than seven years, you get credit for your pension that you had before, you know, I mean, something like that, or just make two years, three years or whatever.
I like option B. I think we should keep it simple and I think two years can always be changed in the future if two years is not working. But generally, if someone's leaving the federal government, they're probably within a two year period of time looking for another job. And it's probably a reasonable period of time to find another job, perhaps, you know, in a municipality. I like option B with the way it is and it can always be up for debate at a later time.
And it we can change these policies. I mean, it's they're yours, so we can change them anytime we want. And believe me, if this is a if the two years is a problem, I'm going to be coming back to you and say, hey, two years is a problem. Here's why. And then we would have we would have a specific case as to why we want to to modify the policy.
Right, I worry about changing policies just for specific cases, but since we're developing this policy and the spirit of the policy is to be more inclusive, then I think, you know, it bears relooking at if you run into any trouble with it.
Okay, so I'm hearing that is option B, the the general consensus, obviously, we'll ask you to take an official action in a little bit. Okay, the next one was the retiree health insurance stipend. So again, I'm not going to go through all the points that we discussed with you last month. Other than to say, just remind you that, you know, we're the only town on the beach that does not have some sort of retiree health benefit. And then there's the data there from the North Carolina League of Municipalities survey. So.
Would you go back to that just one second?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a quick. Okay, thank you.
So we would not, we didn't have any discussion relating to the the change of how we would determine if someone is eligible. So we're still saying they need to be eligible for unreduced retirement under the local government employees retirement system and have served a minimum of fifteen years with the town of Duck at their at their date of retirement. This graph just shows and we shared this with you last month, just went how this benefit would roll in. It would not hit your budget until fiscal twenty eight, which point it would be. That's just one employee at that point. And then it peaks out in fiscal forty four at with fifteen employees. And that's based on our employee census, the current employee census. Things change. So in listening to the discussion last month, this is small and I apologize for that. Option A is as it was written. So as it was written in the in the original information we gave you, it did, there was some discussion last month about, you know, requiring proof of insurance and that someone is actually paying for their medical insurance through another provider if they don't stay on our policy. That was already in in the language that we provided. So option A is as it was. Option B just it really it punches it up a little bit. It says if they're on the on the town's plan, the retiree must retiree must pay their portion of the premium by the date established by the finance administrator prior to the stipend being applied. So you need to pay your portion before the stipend kicks in. And then if the premium is not paid, coverage will be terminated and the eligibility for the benefit may be forfeited. So that's and it's also here saying that if they're not on our plan, again, they still have to furnish that proof of insurance. And proof that they paid for that before the stipend is applied. And then option C says they must stay on our plan. But again, adds the language about the retired employee must pay their portion of the premium before the stipend is applied. And again, they need to otherwise they forfeit coverage. So those are the so option A is the way it was. And then options B and C add some additional language with option C saying they must stay on our plan.
I like option C. I just think that it helps our employee when they retire to stay on our plan and gives them a stipend to help pay for it. If they're not on our plan, you know, they were going probably to a cheaper plan, so we're giving them money that in fact is was geared to help them pay for the insurance and or if someone else provides insurance for them. So I like option C. I think if they want to stay on our plan, then we give them a stipend to help pay for that until the point in time their own's all for it. You know, Medicare or whatever. That's that's my opinion.
I'd like to chime in and say that I prefer option B because looking at the chart that was super helpful about the other towns and what they're offering. This is still much less than the other towns and the whole purpose of this is for kind of recruitment and also appreciation for service. This plan in Duck wouldn't kick in until the fifteen years, right? So so.
Correct.
It's already more restrictive there and the other towns are paying more. And I think when someone leaves that it's, I I do agree that they might have to go to a different health plan because it is perhaps less expensive because they're in a circumstance that requires that. I mean, I think if somebody can afford the good plan that the town is offering, that they would probably opt to stay in there. But I'm trying to look at the broader picture. Someone might be able to go on their spouse's plan or they might have to downgrade their plan. And so for all these reasons, I would be in support of option B. And I appreciate the opportunity to look at a few things. So thank you.
I'm go along with option B also.
When when somebody starts with the town, when they're a new employee, are they offered choices in in healthcare? Or is it just one plan that we use?
Yeah, we we have just one plan, Mr. Mooney. So it's their option is to they can add a spouse, they can add children or they can add family.
Just a question, Drew, and I know you go out for rates almost every year. Obviously, we have a very competitive plan and both cost wise as well as coverage wise. So at this point in time, the plan, you consider the plan for the town an adequate plan?
Assuming my wife isn't watching this. Yes, so our plan is grandfather's, which means it does not meet the current requirements of the Affordable Care Act. Which has the effect of keeping the premiums down. What now I'm I'm finding from my personal experience and I know some others in the room have had, particularly for preventative care, which the A C A or Obamacare, whatever you want to call it, requires that the insurance pay for. Employees are coming out of pocket. So just a simple diagnostic test that my wife had to have or kind of a routine thing that turned into diagnostic was a almost a seven hundred dollar for us out of pocket. So we are going to be looking at our insurance plan now that we have a a new insurance broker to see if there are ways to restructure our health insurance program. We don't want to get, we don't want to get the premiums out of line, but we also want to acknowledge the fact that, you know, our employees are having to come out of pocket pretty significantly at times under the plan.
I guess I guess my other concern is, and and once again, I look at businesses and municipalities and in fact, they're in deep trouble because of benefits that they accrued many years ago and now can't pay the liability. I don't really want to tap that with with future councils, but I just I just think that in fact, we're the youngest town on the beach. So the others are going to have a lot more employees and we'll see how they do it. It's going to obviously result in significant tax increases as their retirement goes up in the older towns. And I just think we got to be cautious on that as we look to the future. And I know right now the projection is is fairly small, but it could grow exponentially based upon all the costs.
And and I.
I just want to be cautious, you know, going into the next couple of years.
And I I would say that that's the that's the primary driver of this not coming in as a retiree health insurance plan. So we're not saying we're going to offer to pay for the retirees' health insurance as other towns have done. So their liability continues to increase as medical costs continue to increase with a stipend. Where it's two hundred dollars, subject to appropriation in the annual budget. So it's it's there, it does not accrue to the to the a liability does not accrue at the same rate that you're going to have in these other towns where they have to deal with all the actuarial tables and all that. And I came from an organization where we had retiree health insurance, saw what I did to our balance sheet and I actually recommended to the council there that we discontinue that benefit.
Future councils can always address and change its stipend also.
Right.
On a yearly basis.
Correct.
So I think I'm a little confused about what we're trying to accomplish. I thought I understood it, but I'm a little confused now. So I have some questions. Right now, when one of our associates meets eligibility for retirement and they do so, do they currently have the option to continue to buy our health insurance?
No, sir.
They do not. Okay. And so my my thought was that we were trying to find some way if they needed it to bridge the gap for them if they retired before age sixty five.
Yes, sir. Correct.
So if that was our objective, then I think if we let them continue to buy our coverage at the same amount they're paying now.
So currently, the employee pays nothing. For their for their own insurance.
Okay, so what if they were they were going to stay on it, we would ask them to pay what we pay for that insurance?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And and that was the idea of the stipend was to to try to offset a portion of that. Yes, sir.
Right. So if we if we allowed them to pay what we pay and we gave them a two hundred dollar a month stipend toward that, I would expect that that would be a fairly reasonable cost for an insurance plan versus what you would get on the open market. And it would be it would be far more extensive in the coverage because you would get dental and everything else that goes with it. So, I mean, I think that would be that would be a big improvement from what they have right now. Yeah?
Yes, sir, without question.
Okay, so then if they left our employment and they could find insurance cheaper on the outside market, why do we want to give them the two hundred dollars? Or if they went to work somewhere else and got other insurance, why do we want to give them two hundred dollars? To me, it then becomes just an enhancement to retirement income as opposed to anything else. That's why I like option C. I would even I I would even be in favor of some sort of a sliding scale on option C where based on the number of years of service, we would reduce the amount they pay of that total premium. Okay, because in my mind, the objective is is to bridge them to age sixty five to then they can get on medical insurance. So you could say something if, you know, if you want, if you go back to the like the the other towns, can you put that back up? You know, the like, if you've got twenty more years of service, it looks like they pay a hundred percent in southern shores. In Nags Head, twenty five and up, a hundred percent, et cetera. Now, I don't know that we want to go that like that, but we could put something that says, you know, if you retire with this amount, we'll pay, you can buy insurance from us and we'll only charge you fifty percent if you got this many years. We'll charge you twenty five percent if you got this many years and then even just forget about the two hundred dollars.
So the and the and the reason we did it
Okay.
With a stipend as opposed to that approach is.
Because of the growth of the liability.
The liability, two hundred dollars, the liability is fixed or whatever that is, subject to appropriation. And I will point out, one of the things you mentioned, Mr. Shano, is if someone got, you know, went to work somewhere else and got insurance, this policy would say, it does say that if you go to work somewhere else and you get insurance, you're not eligible.
Okay.
So they, this is just for folks and and the reason the reason really that I like the the option to go somewhere else other than our plan is they may have found a better plan somewhere else that is more to their liking. Maybe they've moved and they're in a different health insurance network. Maybe they're on a spouse's plan.
Well, you just said it there because someone else is not paying for their insurance. I still go back to option C. And the other thing is, you you look at retirees and certainly coming out of business, and I'm sure Tony's seen this too. Companies have guaranteed health plans and in the future have changed those with a stroke of a pen. They've changed those and put them into other plans or or disallowed plans or, I mean, so you know, you look at the other towns and what they're doing today, that doesn't say tomorrow they're not going to change, but they do as they start to feel, you know, get into those liabilities. I just I just think we have more control if they're on our plan and we are helping them bridge to that point in time. I think once you get onto other insurances and controlling that, that was my point last time, how do you really control that?
Yeah, other than the the way the policy says they need to provide proof that they're insured and the premiums have been paid to our satisfaction.
And if they get cheaper insurance, then why are we offsetting their cost?
Well, I think I'd just like to add to that and I certainly understand your point about wanting to be, you know, controlling costs. So I think that this two hundred idea works for that. I think that trying to broaden that benefit to something beyond our plan takes into account the fact that this person has worked for fifteen years for the town or more and also may have family to consider, dependents and or, you know, spouse that makes another plan holistically more, yeah, in totality more affordable for them, but even though, because I think we have to just take it out of just the employee, I guess, is what I'm saying and and broaden it to perhaps their family. Because certainly maybe one person it might be affordable, but you add those dependents and and all of a sudden you've got more to consider. So I think it just gives us a little more flexibility to assist this employee that's worked with us for fifteen plus years. And I know time flies when we're having fun. I can't believe how many people have already been here for fifteen, you know, twenty, you know, twenty years. It's amazing. When someone comes up even for five years, I can't believe it. But I just think that that gives us, that gives you, it's a better, it gives us the control, but it also allows that person a little more flexibility. So I'm still in favor of option B, although I respect your opinion on option C.
I don't think that I don't see where option B surrenders any of our control as you presented it. They've got to prove that they paid the the premium before they're going to get the stipend from us. So I'm more in favor of option B. People move to other parts of the country and and their old healthcare is just not tenable wherever they go.
Well, why don't we just say everybody retires with fifteen years gets two hundred bucks a month more?
Then they're not proving that they've paid for their health insurance.
I know, but what's the difference? Who, you know, I mean, it's like, what are we trying to do? Boost retirement income or help them bridge the gap till till they can get Medicare or Medicaid?
I think I think that option, I think it helps them bridge the gap because they just. I think that option, I think it helps them bridge the gap because they just may, they may want to stay on this plan, but they may need to go to another plan. So, what's the difference for us if we're just trying to help them? It just gives us a little more flexibility.
I really think if you look at these other towns, that some of these towns could be taking some of our employees away from us just because of this benefit. That 100% is very sweet.
Well, the proof is not there because they're coming here and not going there. That's what you're doing by- Counterargument, but I just, and I kind of agree with Tony, it's kind of a retirement enhancement if in fact, we're not really controlling it from here. What we're trying to do is help offset their costs as they bridge to retirement, and the best way to do that is you're on our plan and we're going to give you a stipend against it. And as I say, you can always address the stipend and the amount in the future. If our healthcare, you know, escalates 10%, maybe we increase the stipend by 10% or by the increase. I mean, councils can deal on that in the future.
Right.
I mean, I just think, I think we lose control once it goes to option B.
Are you concerned about more people taking advantage of it if we went to option B, so therefore be paying out more than, you know, more $200?
I don't, you don't know? How do you know?
Well, you know, the answer to that is-
You're going to be-
The answer to that is right there, it's $200, that's what we're going to pay, doesn't change whether it's option B or it's option C.
That's correct.
It doesn't change. What, option B, though, allows somebody decides to move to Iowa, that if their healthcare benefits from here don't quite comport with whatever's going on in Iowa, they can change and still get the $200 provided that they've paid their premiums. So, I think that we have to consider that a lot of people, especially because the cost of living here is so high, a lot of our employees, when they finish, are going to look to relocate somewhere where their dollar is going to go farther. And I don't think that it's, I think it would be wrong for us to try to control what they're, what they choose as their own healthcare. We're not changing any of the, any of our payment, it's just a different choice for them.
Well, then maybe we make the qualifier to option B, and that is, if you move to a state in fact where you can't basically take this insurance with you, then in fact, then you can therefore, you know, negotiate for your own insurance with your own agency. And you make a good point, you may be able to go to a state that doesn't take this insurance. So, maybe there's a caveat to option B. I just think the more control we have, the more control it's going to be in the future.
Just out of curiosity, do we know offhand what the monthly amount is that we pay per employee for a family plan? What would that number be?
We'll have to look, if that's not a number we keep in our head, we'll have to look it up.
Well, I'm just, no, I mean, I don't want to delay this for another month, you know, so if we can get it tonight, that would be good.
Ms. Barnes has it in her head, I don't have it in mine.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
So, a family plan's a little over 1,800 a month.
Ah.
An employee only is 498, and then the employee spouse and employee children plans are around 1,200 to 1,300 a month.
1,800 a month, hmm.
So, the town pays the employee, so that 498, and then we, if it's, employees adds family members to it, we pay 75% of the total. So, it's a very generous approach to adding, especially adding family members, so the town does supplement quite a bit for current employees. You know, again, when they retire, we're just, it's 200 to bridge, it is bridging the gap until you get to turn 65 and you're eligible for Medicare.
Well, that's more than I thought it would be. They probably could do better. They wouldn't get the same coverage, let's put it that way, but they could get medical coverage and dental for less than 1,800 a month for a family. It wouldn't be as extensive and it would have higher deductibles, but-
And, you know, the real reason, you know, we're saying that we're offering this ability to go somewhere else is we're trying to encourage people to be good consumers of everything, right, including medical insurance, so it allows them to make the choice. And it's up to the council, you know, whether or not that, you know, they have one choice, which is to stay with us or if they have, you know, the ability to find other insurance.
So, I guess that being the case, then I would make a change, and I would say, I would say that option B, and I wouldn't give them the option to stay on our insurance at all. I would just say they, you know, they can, if they, I mean, do we let them stay on our insurance now if they want?
No.
No.
Why wouldn't we want them to be on it? Because we're only in 200 regardless of where they go. So, what's the difference if they stay on our plan that they're used to and they like versus going to another plan?
Usage, but it'll continue to add, you know, to the, you know, the usage, but I guess I'm okay. I'm okay with option B the way it is. I think it's going to be a lot of work for the employee and for us because we're going to have to do a monthly, they're going to have to do something to show they paid their bill every month, and we're going to have to do something to verify that they say paid their bill every month. I mean, if we want to sign up for that, I guess that's okay.
Yeah, and I think for the number of employees that will be on it, I think it's manageable to be able to administer, and, you know, the policy is kind of one layer, and then there's the administration end of it that will develop as an administrative policy that people will have to follow. And then the last one was just the tuition assistance program, and there really wasn't a whole lot of discussion about that at the last one's meeting. We budgeted $9,600 for that this year. It's a maximum of 1,200 per fiscal year, per employee that's participating. We picked 9,600 just to have a number in the budget, and then we'll have to see how the first, the first year goes, and then we'll come back to council with any adjustments we need to make as we work on the 24, 25 budget. So, what we're looking for then is consideration of a motion to approve Resolution 2309 to amend the town of Duck personnel policies. And then, we need to know, part of that motion, which options for vacation accrual and the retiree health as part of that motion, and then we'll clean up the final resolution for the mayor to sign subsequent to the meeting.
I think you've got concurrence on the vacation accrual, option B. I think everyone agreed with option B on the issue. I think you've got a split vote on the retiree health insurance, so it looks like consensus is for B, if I count the votes you're gonna pay.
Correct.
Looks like a three to two split.
So, we'll need a, Mr. Mar, I guess we'll need a motion to approve that resolution with option, option B on the retiree health and, I'm not sure I got it right, option, both option B. So, option B with vacation accrual and option B with retiree health. So, that would be the motion to approve that resolution with those options.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2309, Resolution of the Town Council revising the personnel policies of the Town of Duck using option B for both of the areas of discussion.
As well as the tuition assistance.
Yes, sir. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so that resolution has the tuition assistance in it, we didn't have any options built into that.
Any discussion on the motion on the floor? Here being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes by the chair. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
Item number eight, discussion consideration of authorizing a public hearing on ordinance 23-08, an ordinance establishing a definition for drug paraphernalia sales in the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. What's the end, mayor and council? I'm sorry to keep this report straightforward, but what we're proposing with this ordinance, number 23, does we, is to add a definition for drug paraphernalia sales, and that would be in the definition section of the zoning ordinance. We had worked with our town attorney, Mr. Hobbs, and he has developed the definition this proposed in this amendment ordinance. So, council originally reviewed this over a year ago. We first read across the issue in January 2022, and it just took a little while, it wasn't a front burner issue for us, our town attorney, and so, we had a couple of other things come up in the interim that spurred things along. So, the issue we have is that there are businesses in Duck that sell things that are defined by state laws, drug paraphernalia, you know, and we list some things in there, pipes, bongs, rolling paper, small spoons, you know, things that could be used for certain purposes related to drugs, but can also be used for other things. So, you can go to the convenience store at the gas station and get those, but that doesn't make them a drug paraphernalia sales business. So, our interest in this was asking and working with the town attorney, to the degree possible, can we further define, is there a magic point at which a business becomes a drug paraphernalia sales business? So, what he has drafted, I'm going to be honest with you from a standpoint, it's not as detailed as we would like, you know, we'd love to be able to say, if 25% of what they sell is, so if they have X amount of square feet, it's this, but that's just not the way that the case law and other stuff is set up. So, he has made a recommendation to include this definition. It does help the staff in terms of giving us at least something to hang our hat on as we're making interpretations regarding different types of businesses and how to best classify them. So, that's what we have before you right now, is a proposal. The planning board discusses pretty thoroughly, they had some, they had some good questions about, you know, why can't we just say, you know, we use a word in the staff report, I use a word, primary business was for this, and that was probably a mistake on my part because it's a primary mean 51% of whatever they're selling is drug paraphernalia. So, we don't want to go that far, but anyway, they had some good pointed questions about why we couldn't develop something more specific, but, you know, our town attorney is comfortable with what he's drafted, so questions of that nature are probably best directed toward him. But, the planning board, after a lot of discussion at their June meeting, did vote, ended up voting unanimously to recommend approval of the ordinance you have before you, and this time, we're just asking the council's consideration of setting a public hearing for this item at your August meeting, and you have a recommended motion in there if that's something you wish to do. And I'd be glad to answer any questions the council might have. Our town attorney, maybe we're going to add some comments if his, we're going to let-
Yes, Mr. Hurd, the only comment or additional information I'll provide is there is an attachment B in the agenda item that has the statute, and sort of state law preempts local regulation of this, to the extent that it's already set out definitions and things of that nature, but what we're focusing on is under subsection B of the statute where it says the following, "along with other relevant evidence." And so, it's that phrase that we've sort of seized upon and added to the code the two additional provisions as relevant evidence. And so, I think it's all recognized that these will be looked at on case-by-case basis, but what the ordinance will do is provide some guidelines or assistance for the planning staff to try to administer and try to regulate the businesses as necessary. So, that's all that I really have to add to it.
Could I just add, the genesis of coming to us with this was, I'm trying to kind of equate it with some of the thing else we've ever done, but we had instituted a law that said that our permitted and prohibited use table, we had added, we have drug paraphernalia sales as a prohibited sale use. Am I understanding this correctly?
That's correct.
So, then somebody sells something like that, and that's what raises the flag, and then we have to decide if it's within reason.
Yeah, so, we've had two businesses that have proposed to town, and really a third, sort of, but, you know, and they said, we want to sell these types of items, do you have limitations on that? And we had to work with them to interpret what is or isn't allowed, and, you know, and in both cases, they excluded things that they originally wanted to sell, but we said, that's probably taking it a step too far. You know, if you just do this, this, and this, you're good, and we'll classify you as retail-
Okay.
Because a vast majority of what they were selling had nothing to do with drug paraphernalies.
Like, sort of a ancillary thing. Okay, thank you, because I know, I'm thinking of fireworks, which we of course prohibit, but we can't prohibit a sale of, so I'm just in my head trying to figure out what prompted this, and of course, like, thinking of, we don't allow pornography stores or something like that, I don't know, we, there's some stuff we don't permit, just, and this is one of them, that we're just like, you're not having that kind of store in the town, but if there's just a little something that's on the shelf, it's not considered. Okay, thank you. Just trying to refresh my memory.
It was that distinction because the code had the use table, but it didn't really go any farther than that, except by just looking at the statute. And so, this just gives planning staff, it just bolsters their ability to administer the use table more so than they had before, and it does give them some guidance that they've essentially been using, but I think it does sort of codify that to give them the ability to distinguish between a very incidental sale versus one that is the predominant or a significant part of the sales for the store.
So, the question here is, we want to, we're talking about a public hearing, correct?
Correct.
So, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize a public hearing on ordinance 23-08, an ordinance establishing a definition for drug paraphernalia- establishing a definition for drug paraphernalia sales in the zoning ordinance.
Thank you first, Joe. Any further discussion on the motion on the floor? If you bring that all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Thank you very much, Joe. Item number nine, items referred to in presentations from the town attorney.
Mayor, I have nothing this evening unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Robert. I, I just have one question relating, maybe it's not in order, I don't know, is it, can I ask him about the, the ordinance, the NCE ordinance on paraphernalia?
Yes.
I didn't know if that train left the barn. So the, the North Carolina ordinance that you mentioned here, is everything that they list illegal?
Under, well, the things that are listed.
I mean, it's a definition.
These are definitions, they are not necessarily, these are, they're definitions in subsection A, but then subsection B gets into determining whether there's evidence as to whether those things are maybe drug paraphernalia as far as.
Okay.
It's a little odd the way they do it, but it's, it's such a broad topic that I guess the state did the best they could as far as defining these things. And so the, go ahead. Oh, okay. So that's, that's the best explanation I can give is that I think that, that in addition to what the state statute says, the, the planning staff just has to use their best judgment along with the guidance you give them in the ordinance to evaluate applications and also sales that are going on in the, in the town.
Okay. Could we prohibit a vape shop or a head shop, so to speak, in town?
It depends on the, again, of this criteria and how much of what they're doing.
Okay.
You know, it's, but a short answer is probably if that's the main retail product that they're selling, then yes, we're not allowed that.
Okay.
If all those products, you know, they, or the substantial number of them fit within these definitions, then, then I think it's a legitimate, because you've already prohibited the use in your code. I mean, that's there now.
Right.
This just tries to expand it to give planning staff a little better guidance as far as how to distinguish between the gas station selling very small, yeah, or cigarette, you know, wrapper or something versus something like you described that is more substantial use.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Robert. Going on to items referred to in presentations from the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The department directors will give their reports in order. Mr. Hurd, Chief Black, Chief Ackerman, Ms. Nickens, and then Ms. Barnes.
All right. Sure, that's where I sit up here. So we're going to be a lot shorter this time. So what you see here is we had a relatively comparatively busy month of last year. And then if you look, these are our end of the fiscal year figures in columns on the right, you see the 21, 22, and 22, 23 figures. So what you see there is we ended up, we're trending low for a good amount of the year, but ended up substantially similar to where we were last year. You know, negative 1% is nothing. So that's, you know, really the same level of activity we had the previous year, which was a really, really big year for us. So overall, the product activity was actually pretty strong. And looking at, it's probably issued in June. Now, again, our activity does go down over the summer months because no one wants to deal with tractor heaving contractors. So, but you can see north of the pier there, we have clusters in the sandal lane and in Carolina dunes. To the south, not a lot of activity at all. You know, really it's spread out and not as much activity as we're used to seeing. So we had no new homes that were formulated. We did have two substantial additions. So I just want to move into the project updates and let you know that we did hold, as we, as Jim Gru mentioned last month, we had a pre-bid conference that occurred June 27th. We did have a third bidder, or attended a third potential bidder. The bid opening will be on July 11th, and we'll see what we get on that. So that'll be for again, for a large brick project. We're starting, we're going to be kicking off the West Side feasibility study. We'll be working with the town on that. Let me take a closer year to do, we're looking at working with the property owners and the neighborhood associations along that corridor to get their input to better understand issues and develop solutions. So they'll be working on that study over the next year, but that's scheduled to start in July. We also, before we leave, that we're also in July probably going to have the initial things, some of the geotechnical work related to the shoreline protection project. So that may start as soon as July. And we've been negotiating with the contractor and their subcontractor so that they don't disrupt our events with drilling and things like that. So we've been working with them to minimize that. The tent survey is still open. We're hoping to get input from visitors on that. And then, you know, get back with you for more formal decisions in the fall. The one thing Sandy Cross is really taking some initiative with this to arrange a meeting with the, the different tent vendor companies so that we can give them a forum to share concerns that they have and also to, for us to gain a better understanding of the issues. So as we develop proposals for your consideration, there are things for all parties involved. So I commend her for her work and she's still putting the final touches on that. And finally, DUC, for those of you who are involved or who are not involved yet, every Friday morning, we do a cleanup and Jim Gru, who is the one in charge of that. And that's all I've got, but I'd be glad to answer any questions about those for the council.
I think that's it. Thank you, Joe.
Okay.
Want to keep that relative to the brick project? Let council know that FEMA has let us know we're kind of in the, in the short rows still with our final award. I reached out to Senator Tillis's office and Congressman Murphy's office and talked to members of their staff and actually sent a letter to, to Murphy's office and they're, they're providing some points of input very well this evening. They're providing some encouragement to FEMA to, to move this process along a little bit. Latest conversation I had was this afternoon with Congressman Murphy's office and they've actually gone to a couple of different points of contact in FEMA. So we'll keep trying to push that along.
All right. Good evening, everyone. And I'll start with a picture from yesterday's parade, just a few shots of, of the work before and during the parade. From our aspect, we did have one medical call towards the end, heat related, they did transport, but it was minor, just so you know, in case you saw the, the ambulance in play there. But other than that, pretty successful event, as you've heard from the beginning of our presentation, and I just thought I'd share a couple of pictures. So, all right, let's get to our June activities. We had training hours, 193.3, which if you pay attention, that's pretty low because it's June. So we're busy doing calls. Our inspections are down, but what is up, I added and thought would be interesting to show is an assist town. So that's when we go to the events, if they need help with tables or something, they, they put it in our log as assist town. So we had 10 different events recorded at about 12 and a half hours. So it kind of takes the place of the inspections in the summer. Total calls for service through June, 204. Again, I like to show the trending data, you know, no panic either up or down. It's, if anything, we're a little bit down and this one was the most striking. I'm always fascinated when I pull these numbers every month. This is June this year, so we've only had 65 calls. We're down from 97 last year. Again, what, what's that look like? So when I show you this, you can see we're down in alarm activations. So what do we categorize in alarm activations? It's usually bad batteries. Often alarms are set off due to cooking. And so Trey and I were talking today, it's like, I didn't pull every call to look at what the, the reasons were, and I can do that, but what was still going on last year versus this year is more people were cooking. So I would guess, and I'd be glad to pull that for you, but definitely alarm activations are down. I will also say hopefully they're down because people are changing batteries and we're not getting that call too. So, and then you just take a few differences in any of the other categories and, and there you have the difference. When you map it out by a pie chart, we're about 71% EMS, which is now national average about, it's between 70 and 80%. So we kind of see that as the population grows. So this month of June, we always, it's interesting, Merrick is always in here about this time, is we do surf rescue training. So just to make sure everyone understands our role with surf rescue, they basically get wet and we're there to assist and when they get to shore, we'll take over. We're not afraid to go waist deep and help them out, but we, we depend on the young'uns that are very fit to go out and bring subjects in and then we will help them. So we do cross train every June and we, we canceled the first Tuesday because of bad weather and had to cancel the second Tuesday. So I have a couple of pictures, they're really boring because they're in the bay. But so these are two pictures side by side of line poles. So if they go out in rough water, especially they go out with a buoy with a line on it and we help them bring the line back in with their subjects. So we did this in the bay with them. So that's just a couple of pictures of the guards teaching us basically. And then we also went over how we're going to transport patients. So we use the SCED here. The SCED is, is probably our most important thing we carry because we use it in houses, we use it on the beach everywhere. So we went ahead and did some SCED training. But more importantly, every June we eat. And so we, we provide hot dogs for all the guards and so we, we did our normal night. So I just, I throw a few pictures in there. Turning to the budget, so I thought I'd update you on the public safety building. Thank you again for those repairs. If you look at the picture on the left, that's the front of the building, that's them taking the current siding off. The middle picture is showing the new gray on the right and the new siding on the left. And then it said police and fire up there. And so the firefighters took it upon themselves to go ahead and repaint those police and fire signs. They look really good. They're going to be great going back up. So it was a group effort. They're probably almost done with siding and then the painting will take just a little bit longer. Tomorrow, they will start the asphalt section that we've identified for this year's project. And so we have apparatus in different bays right now for the next, for probably the next 30 days for the apparatus. Lighter vehicles, we can do probably within 10 to 14 days. So you'll see them tearing it up tomorrow and working on the front. It's in the truck 11 bay, which is the farthest bay, and then a postage stamp piece in the front, front of the property. So those things are going on. The last thing left will be some interior drywall repairs. We were able, you know, money's tight, we were able, because we had definitely some plywood that needed to be replaced, not as much as we thought. So we were able to go ahead and do what is the gym and the building out back. And that was a, a maybe depending on where we were with plywood. So they were able to put that into this project, which is really good. It looks amazing. I know it's the same color, but if anyone ever really walked around there, you can see a big difference. So thank you for that. And then, I'm sorry, chief, I'm gonna, I'm gonna steal your thunder, but today, yes, Officer Knockin did come over and say, I've got a problem. The deer's mama unfortunately deceased and was found and they knew this fawn was out there. So Trey and Justin went out in waiters, actually a lot farther out in waiters than they thought they were going to do to bring the fawn in. And then there's just a couple of pictures. So again, great effort by public safety today and probably get better video next. You'll one-up me next month if there's video. And then with that, I'll take any questions with what's going on this summer.
What do we do with the fawn?
I know, where'd the fawn go?
It went to rehab, right? Yep, rehab.
Okay.
Yeah. So, that's it. Any questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know. I bored the last folks out.
You should have sworn a minute at the end of the meeting, we'd have a full house.
Think about it. All right. June is crazy out there for us. There is no doubt, the gates are wide open. Fortunately, nothing crazy has happened, but they're definitely keeping us busy. Traffic enforcement's right on par. Vehicle crashes, I, I expected a increase this month, but we actually had the exact same number the prior month, which was a bit surprising to me. But the accidents we're seeing are consistently folks stopping to allow people to cross the road at marked crosswalks and, and non-crosswalk areas. But fortunately, the majority of them are relatively low speed collisions without injuries. Business checks, still a big priority at night for us, and then extra patrols were down quite a bit. So 1,209 calls overall for the month. Looking at traffic, we saw 282,434 vehicles enter DUC in the month of June. So that was a 22% increase from May. Expect that to continue to go up as, as this month progresses. We're still seeing about 61% of vehicles either come to or from Corolla. So that's remaining very consistent. We will have in the budget, you authorize new dedicated traffic counters for the north and south end of town. I hope to get them up by the end of the year, but that really will provide us a, a baseline going forward to be able to look at that data in, in very new ways. So looking forward to that. Happy to report that we had three officers achieve their intermediate law enforcement certificate. So the state, North Carolina, issues these certificates based on their experience and training. So intermediate is the midpoint. Most officers achieve that with, in the seven, eight, 10-year mark in their career, and then they move on to advanced after that. So we're lucky, we have a, a high number of officers that have made this, at least the intermediate. least the intermediate achievement. And then all of our officers at 15 years or higher hold advanced certificates. So something a lot of departments can't say. Not going to rehash the parade too much, other than to say it, the prep went well. We really have perfected, I guess, what we put in place last year with the barricades. Big thanks to Ben Vordren for loaning us the tractor. That made a huge difference in terms of muscle power that was needed to move those things around. But in all, put out 300 barricades, 150 traffic cones. So no small task, but with police and fire working together, we got that done. Just a little bit about last night, and we only received four calls for pyrotechnics. But there was a lot of fireworks going off. So like to just reiterate every year where our focus is. And we put the focus on where there's the greatest threat to life and property. And most of the time, that's in the interior parts of the neighborhoods. So we just don't have the personnel to be out on the beach trying to chase down fireworks. And we went back and really looked at these five calls, which is really low, a low number for us. The time it takes for an officer to go out there, find those people in the dark and address it, can take upwards of 45 minutes to an hour. So it does make it difficult. So rest assured, they were out there actively patrolling and looking for the greatest threat to stop that. So that's where that stands. The traffic cameras are live. There's a prominent place right on the town website where they can be accessed by the public. That project seems to be working very well, working with our neighbors in Currituck and southern shores to provide them access to the data as well. So with that, take any questions you might have.
How are you doing the low-speed vehicles or legal golf carts?
Doing as best we can. I looked at that today. Over the last 30 days, I had about 14 stops that were specifically LSVs or golf carts. So the officers are definitely continuing to put a focus on that. I've had a number of people contact me and say, hey, we saw an officer stop the cart. We also went out to the various vendors in town that are renting them and asked them, hey, give us the same spiel you give people when they rent a cart so we can hear what you're telling them, so that we know when they tell us they've never heard this, if that's the case. But also, it gave us an opportunity to talk with the staff members and tell them what we're seeing, the biggest issues, and reiterate to them that we're out there and we're looking for these things. So I think that was pretty effective, especially those two large companies that operate here in town. So I think we're, I won't say we're making headway, because we're still seeing the problems, but we're addressing them head on.
I think one of our folks, we got an email earlier tonight saying that there was going to be a public comment. And one of the points that this person was thinking about raising, I guess, was the idea of electric vehicles on the sidewalk. Are you, I know that that is not, I mean, electric bikes, I'm sorry. That is something that is permitted, right? But I'm just wondering if you can comment on that.
Sure. So right now, our town ordinance bans any motorized vehicle from either our sidewalks or our pedestrian pathway. The discussions we've had are the state of North Carolina defines e-bikes as bicycles. They took that extra step to put it in its own category. Where that becomes the greatest issue for us is, if you look at the Village, for instance, every time that a sidewalk stops and goes through an intersection of a state-maintained roadway, that e-bike becomes legal, illegal, legal, illegal. So if we were to have a crash at an intersection with an e-bike and somebody was riding it, if the crash occurred inside the intersection, there'd be no violation. It'd be, they were operating on a state-maintained road for that brief period of time. So it creates a real issue from the standpoint of educating the public on what is and isn't legal. But as it stands today, our ordinance does ban motorized vehicles. So for purposes of operating on our sidewalk, it still meets our definition of motorized vehicle. So it's something I think we're going to continue to look at. Joe and Drew and I have had conversations on it. And we're also looking around the state to see what others are doing to address it. I know that NAGS had recently changed their ordinance to allow e-bikes to operate on their path. So one of the things we're watching to see how that goes, what issues they might encounter that we want to consider.
About the electric scooters and electric
They are clearly not authorized. The one-wheelers, the motorized scooters are absolutely meet our definition of motorized vehicle and can't operate on the bike path. The officers are trying to get out there and educate those people as best they can, but as you've seen, it's an issue.
Thank you for reminding us about this distinction.
Thank you.
Train me well.
All right. Good evening, council. I'm going to try to go through this, but I don't want to rush because I do have quite a bit of information to share with you. Okay, so the first thing that I want to go over, you all were provided a memo and this will be available on our website. But one thing that I have stressed several times is an increased effort to boost transparency and communication with all of our stakeholders. And with that comes a progress report. As council is aware, you all met in January to discuss strategic goals to help achieve your 2032 vision. I have outlined them here and provided the logo as well. There are six unifying principles, and I just wanted to provide a little update to show what staff has done to bring the 2032 vision to fruition. And I'm not going to read through all of these, but this is the form that was essentially created after the meeting. I know it's small to see on the monitors, but again, this will be available on our website. But there are 18 total strategic goals that each, they all fall under a certain unifying principle. And in the January strategic planning session, council was able to weigh in on these and prioritize and rank them in orders of importance and what mattered most. And with that, I am proud to say, oops, a couple of my checkmarks are off. I'm sorry about that. But staff has worked to help these come to fruition. Each of these action items has been either completed or is in progress. And again, I apologize, my formatting shows those checkmarks out of place. So there should be a checkbox next to each of those items. Again, I won't go through all of them because there are 18, but just to kind of point out a few. For example, with enforcing the standard or the specialty use permits and ordinances, as you're aware, staff is actively enforcing the trash and recycling rollback ordinance, as well as working with businesses to get back to a post-COVID compliance. Even with the Public Safety Building, we've worked with them to establish relationships with their new staff member, Erin. I'm going to mispronounce her name and I'm very sorry, but working with her to create that relationship and also work with them to move forward with the Public Safety Building. And again, this is just the other half of them. And as you can see, thanks to my perfect formatting on this slide, we have met all of these action items or they're all in progress. And again, these are all highlighted in the memo that I provided to you. But I just wanted to show that staff does have that in mind as we work to serve council and the community and all of our stakeholders. We want the best for the town and we do, you know, everything that we do is for a reason. And we work hard to make sure that we take all things into consideration. And we want to get to 2032 and be able to look back and have a big old checkmark and a perfect checkbox, saying that we have completed all of these things. So again, I'll put this memo on our website so everybody can see. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention to show what we've done to go forward with bringing your vision to vision. So switching gears a little bit, I did complete a communication survey that ran from March to June. I only had 89 respondents, but this was posted on our website, social media, and in our newsletters. This is a little bit difficult to see and I'm sorry. But it does show that we did not have any respondents that were younger than 35. So there is a small demographic that I am looking to actively engage and reach them because when we look at our transient population, we have a wide range of audiences that come here. So even though our year-round population is constant, our transient population, these are the people that we need to be communicating things like trash and recycling enforcement to, as well as safety information, because it could save someone's life. So this was really helpful to me to show where that gap is and where I can focus my efforts with getting out messaging. This was just something interesting, too. This is how people currently receive their news. And again, the percentages are small and I'm sorry about that. But we do have, despite the demographic that responded to the survey, we do have a lot of stakeholders that do receive their information digitally via our website, as well as e-news. They also get information via email, whether that's correspondence with staff members directly or, you know, if they get it from OBX Today or the Outer Banks Voice. So it is interesting to see that even though we do have an older demographic, we do still have a little bit of a digital literacy that is really interesting because you would otherwise think that it would be contrary to that. And this is a slight variation of the previous question, but just how do you prefer to receive your information? And it kind of parallels before, from the chart before, but it does show that how people are receiving their news is how they want to receive it. So it helps kind of drive that point home, that the way that we're getting our information out is working. And this is just some other information, what they're interested in. And I think this is interesting because you have a very invested community. These are all matters of importance that you don't need to see the percentages to know that your community cares about what we're doing here. So again, this really helps me figure out what is important and what we put out. So I think it's just very special to show that we have a very invested community. And I mentioned this before, but all of this survey was helpful because I am working on a communication plan. But it also is useful in identifying those deficits in our audience and bridging the gap in between who we have currently invested and who we can reach. And with that, it's a lot of fun for me because I can find new ways of reaching these stakeholders. And I'm very grateful to town staff and Drew and council because I'm a very creative person and this has been very, very fun for me. And I have two examples specifically, Instagram reels and the sitting and standing duck. So Instagram reels are, if you haven't seen on our Instagram page, I've experimented with two little reels. I made one from the Fourth of July parade. And then I think it was last week or the week before, I just went around town and took quick little videos and I pulled them all together and I put a song with it. And we reached over 10,000 accounts with the one we're working around town. We typically make 1,000, 2,000. So we kind of reach with, we have this people with platform our week. And I did yesterday for Fourth of July, my yesterday, I reached almost 7,400 accounts. So 6,500 accounts, but I got 7,400. So that's really fun for me to play around with that and just get that out. So very excited to work this more. But I think I'm even more excited about the sitting and standing duck. So back in college, we had something that hung on the back of bathroom stalls. And I thought that would be a great opportunity to do that here. So if you, they're on the back of the room doors here at Town Hall, but I just built a little beach scene and it has rules and safety information and they're able to scan reel, they're on their phone anyway. So they can scan and go to the event's calendar and, you know, while they're, it's just something really quick that has a lot of quick importance and information. But it's right there in the bathroom, both bathrooms. I know Public Safety has it as well. I've been talking to see if we can get some businesses to have them split. It's just another way to explore messaging out and have a little poster behind it because I'm not excited of the sitting or standing duck, but let us know if you want one. We give a fresh one in public restroom. I've heard a lot of good feedback, but anyone's letting me know and I'm happy about that. On June 29, Merrick was part of a multi-agency press conference. This video is on our website. Deer County streamed it, but it was just a great press conference organized by Rachel Tackett at Kill Double Hills to have lifeguards. Deer County Sheriff's Department was there, different PIOs, just to go over different things. Each agency was represented, represented, excuse me, to go over beach safety and things that, you know, our beachgoers need to know. So this is available on our website. But I would like to thank Merrick for coming in and he had the pleasure of discussing beach holes, which as we know, is an increasing issue here on the Outer Banks and beaches in general. Jeff mentioned this already, but the live traffic cameras are on our website. I've tried to make them as accessible as possible. They are in a dropdown menu, but I also do have it located at the top of our website. I don't know if you can kind of see where I'm circling there. So you can go on there. There are three different views, but thank you for getting that put together, Jeff and council. I'm very excited about that. And a lot of people have interacted with that on our website already. So this has been a great resource. Jazz Festival is, it's coming, it's coming. Sponsorship packets have gone out. I'm looking at new sponsors and new partners. We have a lot of new businesses in the community. So I want to reach out to them and explain what the Jazz Festival is and what potential there is for involvement on their end. And I do have digital and print ads that are currently live and there are additional ones forthcoming. And then events update, sorry, I'm speeding through this, but I have thrown a lot at you. We've had 3,500 attendees at all of our summer events so far, despite even two magic shows being moved inside due to weather. As of yesterday, merchandise sales are $1,500 and we have 225 bricks sold to date. And as you know, yesterday was the Fourth of July parade. We'll go through this debrief next month, but I just wanted to show a couple of views. This was leaving Scarborough Lane at the end of the parade yesterday. And this one is stuck in my head. This is Christopher Drive. And it was bizarre just to look back and see how many people attend the parade. And it's great that we have that much community support for this event. I did that on purpose. So again, we'll have more of a debrief on that next month. And they mentioned this yesterday, but this was the giant puddle that surf rescue was diligently helping to clear out. With Sandy, I was about to say, you can kind of see him back there, but they worked really hard to get that. And Sandy mentioned that this was sore in action. So I wanted to highlight this because it was a great effort. On Tuesday, we have our first movie on the green. It should be a good one and it's Jaws. Who doesn't like that movie, especially outside in the dark? So we're really excited about that. And that is everything. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Kay.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm going to be super quick tonight for a change. I'm going to give you a quick finance update. Our monthly cash balances, we ended June 30th with $12,562,952. Excluding the beach nourishment bonds, it was $12,448,000. Compared to last year, we've had a 4.1% increase. And this just shows our general checking account balance. We ended just over 1 million. So it's 8.4% of our general fund cash balances. And then the remaining funds are still in our investment accounts, the majority being in the North Carolina Capital Management Trust portfolio. You will notice the FEMA beach nourishment account was brought to zero and that was actually closed because we had used all those funds in that account. And then just a quick update. So we are actually going to provide our financial statements one month after. So for instance, tonight, I would normally provide the June update, but I'm going to give that in August. It gives us a little more time to complete our bank reconciliations, review everything, evaluate everything with Teresa. evaluate everything with Teresa, and then for you as well, to review them a couple weeks before the next council meeting. So I should have the June financial statements to you next week, and if you have any questions, just let us know.
So what you're saying is, you'll probably, within the next couple of days, give us the detail for June and after May, and then July, you'll give us the highlights. We'll look at the details, so we'll have a little better knowledge.
Yes.
That was a question I was thinking about asking when we, during the consent agenda, when we approved the audit, and just reminding me how much Teresa and her crew are involved in our kind of day-to-day.
Yes, so Teresa, actually, so at the end of every month after I complete the reconciliations, we send Teresa the financial statements before they are forwarded to Drew, so she can review all the accounts, both for the capital reserve fund and our general fund. She gives us any suggestions, issues that she sees that we can try to correct before we get to the end of the year. Especially this month, it was, it was a lot more for her to review, because it is the year-end, so we really wanted to allow a little bit more time, and then also for you guys to have a little more time to review them before the council meetings.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Do you have any other questions?
Thank you, Jessica.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, item number 11, mayor's agenda, I have a few items here. First of all, I have my mayor and chairman meeting scheduled for 7:18. It'll be hosted by Southern Shores. I did send a letter out to council and to Drew today. It's time to start working on the town manager review, and you'll see the timeline is, you did get a blank review form, but there's no need to do that until we get Drew's input, which is going to be due on the 21st, and then our input will be due back to Monica on the 28th for consolidation, and August 2nd, we'll schedule a closed session for the review. The, just to note, Deer County put out a notice, council filing starts on Friday, I believe, at noon the 7th and runs through the 21st. Anyone interested in being a candidate for the town council. And lastly, a big thank you, and I did send a note out today, and I think I speak for council, and to basically Drew and Kay and Betsy and the two chiefs and all the staff, everybody involved and all the volunteers, was just a great Fourth of July parade. Thunderstorm cleared out just in time. Looked a little bad about 6:30, but it was gone. It was a nice, warm, hot day, and there's no doubt that the snow cones and the watermelon in the water were big hits in the park. And I don't know how many, I think Jessica, or someone was counting the snow cones today, but there was a lot of snow cones that went out. So, and that's all I have, and then we'll move on to item number 12, and that's the council members' comments, and starting with Mayor Portem, Monica Thibault.
Thank you, mayor. I just also want to echo the comments about the great parade, and I think it just brings this, as we heard in the public comment, you know, this great sense of community, this just pride in not only our country as a whole, but in our town and what we offer. I get so many compliments from people who have such great things to say about Duck, and I think it's just a really testament to our staff and to the council and our great volunteers. So it's really something I'm very proud of and always love to hear. So, and the events have been great, the storytime I got to go to with my granddaughter and really enjoyed it with the chalk art, of course, everything, all the concerts. So it's just been wonderful to see the community, and I really appreciate it. Also, I like that reaching out to the vendors, you know, the tent vendors, I don't know about the drug paraphernalia vendors, but who's the other vendor we talked about tonight? As I point to Joe, I'm not sure why, but who's the other vendor? Well, the tents and, anyway, appreciate that collaboration that we're looking for with hearing from folks, oh, the golf cart folks. Just, you know, keeping that communication going and that engagement with the businesses, just really great stuff. So that's my big thank you, and I am planning to run, and I hope we get great participation. I wore a vote sign yesterday, just trying to get everybody to think about voting. It doesn't matter who you vote for, you just got to vote. So I'll be running. I won't be able to sign up until next week, but I will be.
Thank you, Monica. Councilmember Red Mooney.
Nothing for me.
Councilmember Shandy Whitman.
I'd also like to say, thank the staff and everyone for the parade yesterday. It was great. And all the events that we have in the park and in the amphitheater this year. Thank you.
Councilmember Tony Shannon.
Nothing specific, other than thanking again everybody. I know it was a lot of work, and it's obvious, you can see that it's a lot of work, and you can see kind of the concern and stress that everybody has, that everything's going to go okay, and it did, thankfully. But I think, you know, what's really important is the appreciation of the people who are out there watching the parade. I mean, they really enjoy it, you know, they're having fun, they're having a good time, the kids are there, the kids are all dressed in different outfits and everything, and it's a piece of Americana that's really vanishing from a lot of towns in our country, unfortunately. And it's nice that we keep that tradition up, and these little kids will come back, and they'll remember it, and they'll bring their kids, and it'll be a wonderful tradition. So I hope that all of us continue it, and I hope our successors continue it for many years. It's a wonderful event. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony. Item number 13, but this time I'll open up the podium for public comments. If anyone would like to address the council this evening, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address, and limit your time for three minutes. There be no one standing up to come forth, I'll close the public comments. Any other visits to come before the council this evening. There being none, I remind council that our next meeting will be the regular meeting on Wednesday, August 2nd, 2023, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Aye. My meeting is adjourned.